All right, my clock just turned six thirty. I see that we have a quorum of the city council, all members present in the room. So I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda this evening is consent agenda. Under consent agenda, the first item is vouchers totaling one hundred eighty-six thousand, seven forty-eight and eighty-eight cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we had item two, which were minutes from the March fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Everyone received copies of the minutes. Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Byes seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The first opportunity now is next is public comment. Is there anyone from the public, either in the room or online, that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. And I'm not sure Crystal's with us yet.
Doesn't appear so.
So if if it's all right, do you want to go to the audit or to the entrepreneurship center?
Danielle, you've got to go somewhere.
So Danielle, if you if you could come up here and tell them, I'd sure appreciate it. That way people out in the audience can see.
I'm Danielle Hollingshaw. For those of you who have not met me before, I'm the principal, that's in charge of the audit for the city of Hillsborough. And I go through this super fast. So if you have any questions, if there's anything you want me to speak to on or in more detail, please stop me. Otherwise, I'll just go through my spiel and then answer any questions you have. Um, the first, I'll start with the ballot report. And on page one, two, and three, this is our independent auditor's report. And at the very top is where we give our opinion on the audit. And you receive an adverse opinion on GAAP. That's because you you waive GAAP every year. And then the third paragraph down is where we're giving the unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. And that's the highest opinion you can receive. Basically stating, we believe these financial statement referred to presents fairly in all material respects. And then we go into the responsibility of the management and the auditor's responsibility. Then I encourage you to read through those. There's sometimes confusion as to what we're actually auditing. So I let you read that on your own, but a good recap of what we do. On page four, this is a financial statement that we issue that opinion on. Can you guys pool all your funds together? Can you like pulls them all together? At the end of the year, you did have a change in unencumbered cash, an increase of almost six hundred fourteen thousand. But as you know, five hundred fifty-one thousand of that's the CDVG. That is still hadn't been spent at the end of the year. So pretty much consistent from one year to the next. But your utility funds did, we did see an increase in your electric, which was something you guys were looking for. The next several pages are the notes to the financials. K-MAG did not have any significant changes to the notes. So I won't go through those in detail, but these are the policies that this city follows. There is on page eleven. We also have to go through about eight pages of Kansas statute requirements. And we did have one compliance finding for that. The city was not properly bonded for, if you're over a hundred thousand for a construction project, you're supposed to be bonded for a performance bond. And one of the utility companies was not bonded this past year.
This was the sewer lining project we did with Johnson. We're aware of that now.
We're aware of that now. Correct that issue.
And then if you turn to page seventeen, this is your long-term debt schedule. And at the end of the year, you have a balance of thirteen million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, eight thirty-five in the city. And then nine hundred and eighty-five thousand with the public building commission. And that is expected to be paid off in twenty forty-two, if you don't take anything else out. On page nineteen, this is your actual budget, athletic expenditures. And you did not have any budget violations. And then the next several pages are each individual fund comparing prior year, actual to current year, as well as to the budget. Just some more detail gives you a better idea of what actually went through the funds. I won't go through those in detail unless you have a specific question on one of those ones. The other piece of the audit is we let governance know if we've had any difficulties with management. And that's in the letter that was is kind of stuck in there in the binder. Um, we didn't have any difficulties. We didn't have any disagreements. We had a couple uncorrected misstatements, but they weren't anything significant. Um, we also go over any recommendations we have for them. And that starts on page three. Uh, there's just a couple that we have noted this year. The first one being payroll liability accounts. And this is a software. Figuring out the software and what it's doing and making sure those liabilities at the end of the year are correct, or at least at the end of the month are correct. And then the CDVG and the Freedom Claims each have their own bank account. Um, we recommend they get put in the system if they can. Sometimes the system doesn't like to work with us. Um, so if at the very least it knows needs to go on the treasury report, it'd be included, that is a city, city. And then we do have, still have a significant deficiency for proper segregation of duties. Um, if the city doesn't change staffing, we could potentially get close to getting rid of that one. Um, but when they're having to cover for staffing changes, it's it's hard to completely remove that one. So. Any questions? I know, that's fast. I try to be fast.
Maybe for Ronald's benefit, on that last item, maybe you could go into a little more in depth, because this is Ronald's first audit. So.
On the segregation?
Yeah, just it has to do with, we don't have, we're not staff heavy.
Correct. So basically, every accounting function should have it, basically have its own separate person in that function. Um, the city is very close to having that. The problem is they have turnover every year. And so when that happened, Danielle kind of gets pulled in. Some of those controls that would require that segregation of duties get lost because she's not covered. Um, and it's just, it's very common in small cities. So, um, if you go a couple years with every spot filled, no changes. I, you have it, you have the procedures in place. It's just being able to utilize them.
And also just maybe, maybe just a quick word up on the GAAP accounting versus the, yeah.
Yes. So, um, Kansas allows, well, really anybody, but as long as your debt allows it to follow a K-MAG basis, which is a regulatory basis of accounting. It's basically cash receipts, cash disbursements, and accounts payable. Whereas GAAP is much more in-depth, a lot more time consuming. You need more people to be able to track fixed assets and all the different things. And so they allow cities and counties to follow this instead. And so they have to waive that GAAP, and then they're allowed to follow this basis.
Okay, any other questions for? So it seems like
It was a good year.
Getting we're getting there. Danielle or her sister Danielle.
The fight, we're shrinking some of the amount of funds. We had a lot of fun. Um, we're starting to shrink some of those and clean up and just make it a little more simpler, not not quite complicated.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Don't see Crystal. It's all right. Then then let's move on to, we have Jeremy Enzi here, the director of the Central Kansas Entrepreneurship Center at Tabor College here to give us his annual report. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to come here and present our our report for the Entrepreneurship Center. Also wanted to say thank you for your dedication to the Entrepreneurship Center and uh, what we're trying to do here in Hillsborough and the surrounding areas and the county. So to kind of get started, I started in August. Uh, so it's an annual report, but I can really give you a report of what we've done since August. And in September, uh, we had, we formed a five-person advisory board. And so through that advisory board, we have, uh, the mayor, Matt Stiles, and then we have three members of Tabor faculty on there. So President Jansen is currently on there. Terry Enz, who was the director before as well, and then Dr. Melinda Rangel, who is one of the business professors and, uh, director of the MBA program for Tabor. Um, in October, I went to the Global Consortium of Entrepreneurship Centers. It was a conference down in Dallas, Texas. And so through there, able to network with other directors as well as kind of hear what they do, how they run their centers. Since we have a new center, it's kind of like, okay, now that we have a center, what do we do? Uh, how do we run that? What should I be doing? Uh, what I found out is that we are one of the smallest colleges and centers. So I met with a gentleman from New Or- uh, New Orleans, Loyola University down there. And he said they were one of the smallest with forty-five hundred students. And so we're about five hundred and fifty students. But anyway, we were able to glean some information from him and some of the other meetings that I went to. And so we haplessly stole, uh, one of their ideas. And we did a side hustle challenge. Uh, so that side hustle challenge was for students at Tabor. If they do anything from cut hair, they're starting a business, they're entrepreneurial, they're selling something at the school, or starting a business. They were able to participate. And so the side hustle challenge was a poster board presentation. So they weren't given any type of a pitch. Uh, they didn't have to have a business plan or anything written out. This is just poster board and uh, Matt was one of the judges. I judged.
I got stuck with a lot of pitches. But that wasn't me. That was just me talking to them.
That was the best part is we had twenty-five students who were really interested. And they wanted to talk to us. They wanted to know us what they're doing. They were excited about their venture and and what they could be doing. And so through that, I was going to kind of mention these winners in case, uh, Laura Paulus covered it in the paper. Uh, so it was on the free press if you saw that. But we had, uh, one of the local gals won. Uh, Gracie Kidd is from the Canton, Galva area. I just was talking to her this morning. And so she started a pets and porches house sitting business. And so she hadn't really started it at the time. It was kind of this idea and she was kind of had watched a couple. And she said this summer, she's was planning to get a job. And that's, this is basically her job this summer. She already has, I think, eight to ten jobs lined up. Um, and it's really just booming. So she was our our overall winner. Uh, second place went to JP and Nathaniel. Many of you know the two of them. They started Gain Central. And so they have the protein bowls where they have the oats and the the Peruvian superfood, it's amino acids. So twenty-five grams of protein in this bowl and um, can be a meal replacement. So they were second place. Third place was Laura Savage, who's also local. She's from Marion and has the Mud Creek Cattle Company with her parents. But her part of it is expanding into the social media. And then kind of doing like what Omaha Steaks does with their steak. So they have Black Angus beef. And so so those were our top three winners. And then over the last six months, I've been met with several students, a few community members regarding CCAC business plans, starting a business. Right now, I am working with two students. So one who's interested in getting into the food industry. So he's from Texas and barbecues. And, uh, so I have set him up um, with the barbecue place in Marion that's getting started. So he's contacted with them as well as Dino's been very helpful as to, okay, what are the regs on the food industry? So I know a little bit, but know enough to contact someone who's smarter than I am to say, okay, what are the rules and regs around a food truck? And so how can you legally do this without just like barbecuing in the backyard and selling it? So, uh, been working with him a little bit uh, as well as another one who's interested in technology. And so kind of working with him to see how we get his business started. He's working with his dad on that one. And then two other students, Ian and Alejandro. So they have, um, they were also in the side hustle challenge and did very well. So they have, uh, it's a future gen, digital.
Gen, yeah.
Future gen. So they're a digital ad agency. So they kind of help with AI and marketing their business. And so working with them this semester, I was able to partner them with another local business who was looking at marketing. And so they got their first contract here locally and, uh, working with the business to help them improve their marketing efforts in the area. So glad to get them going. Um, in February, so Tabor, along with Marion County, Marion, uh, and Hillsborough E-Communities Network Kansas sponsored our Destination Creation Course. And so I participated in Destination Creations. So, uh, John Schaller is out of Longmont, Colorado. And I went out there probably six years ago and did the course out there. He came to Marion and did and did a course. Um, so we had the course, we had seven businesses, uh, eight total participants, uh, take the class. And, you know, really, the class is about what makes you and your business unique. And so, and then what makes you unique? And then how are you able to sell your business? And then of course, in the end, with your business, grow your own or grow revenue through your business. So, uh, it was a four-week class. We met once a week, about three hours. And so we just finished that up. We were also working on coworking space. So we kind of put it out to the students regarding coworking space. So there'll be, uh, an ad in the in the free press next week that's talking more about that. But essentially, sharing the facility at CCAC, we have five offices down there. And so with the shared space and coworking space, how can you collaborate? So when businesses get together, you get together. Obviously, you get more ideas spurred than just you sitting in your office or working alone. So that's the idea to kind of help kickstart new ideas through processes. Maybe have them previously considered and kind of share, uh, that space. Uh, the last couple of things is we tried again to do a youth entrepreneurship challenge with the high school students. So we actually went to Hillsborough High, contacted business teachers, FFA. Um, and we had one participant sign up for the spring. So we ended up canceling the event, uh, this year. So we will try that again next year. Uh, and I was talking to Matt here, I don't know, a few weeks ago anyway, before spring break. And we're looking at changing that youth entrepreneurship challenge to maybe a Tabor entrepreneurship challenge. Uh, and have the Tabor students, uh, maybe participate in the same type of thing that the high school students would have done. So I've talked to a couple of students. And so we're looking at trying to get that uh, probably in the middle of April. So they have finals that kind of first week in May. So two weeks before that may be a good time that they don't have the lot on their plate. Uh, this, instead of being more like the side hustle challenge, this would be, you have a two to three-page business plan. Uh, you do your pitch. And then you kind of also have this presentation. So a lot more than the side hustle challenge, uh, involved with this. And kind of the last thing would be, you know, where are we going in the future? And what does that look like over the next six months? And you know, with the Central Kansas Entrepreneurship Center, we have the Tabor students, we have the Hillsborough community. We're Marion County. So we're trying to help all the county. So, you know, where do we focus over the next six years? And so through the Global Consortium of Entrepreneurship Centers, they have a resource that I'm looking at, and I've talked to Dr. Jansen about, that would be developing a stra- a strategic plan. So just like you would with your city or any business, it's where do you need to focus? Where do you need to go? And so I'm in the process of getting references and looking into that. But, um, my goal and kind of hope is whether it's with them, someone else, or with our advisory board would be to develop a strategic plan to say, where do we need to concentrate now? So more than just having a couple of events and having speakers come in, you know, where do we need to put our focus to? And what do other entrepreneurship centers look like? So, you know, kind of a, it's a new venture for all of us. So learning from others' expertise and developing a a vision. A more direct vision and more direct a strategic plan. So that's kind of where we're heading and what we've done over the last six to seven months. So any questions or comments from council?
Would, would, we were going to look at the youth entrepreneurship challenge, because it's a program through, um, Network Kansas, E-Communities. So this year, for whatever reason, we didn't do well. I don't know. It's the last two years. We've had changes in the business teachers, especially here in Hillsborough for sure. And I think Marion, I don't know if they've changed or not, but some things have changed in the atmosphere. And so, you know, normally we would have, I think the last year we did it, we had ten-ish.
It wasn't last year, but two.
Two years ago, yeah. Um, it really does get driven by the teacher. Uh, if you have the teacher in the right frame of mind, you can, you can drive that, uh, project forward. And we've always had pretty good representation from Hillsborough and Marion. We always wanted to try to get Center and Peabody and and Gossel and some of the others to really kind of grab onto that too. But they've just never, never taken to it. So I think that, uh, Jeremy and Joe have gone out and done, done some presentations. And Joe's probably the best salesman we've got. Um, Joe's a graduate student.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they would go to the classrooms. And I think, you know, doing more of that and trying to get kids on board as part of that project. I'm not sure what the deal is, but, you know, I think it needs, we're going to try to pursue it, I think, some more.
We even offered my, I mean, first prize was five hundred, I think it was.
Five hundred bucks, yeah. It's not insignificant.
And it's not that you have to have the business. Yeah, I see two high school students. Five, five hundred bucks, right? If we would have had three, we would have done it. We had, you know, three people. And um, I even put that out to a couple of high school, uh, teachers that have one, I just need two more. And, you know, we'll do it. We just didn't get it. I think the teachers think it's going to be more work. Um, you know, Joe and I offered to help any of the students with getting the poster together and getting things together. But we'll try again next year, but for sure. Definitely want to get our high school students involved.
Yeah.
Questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Do the Coffin Center do anything towards this kind of group, the Coffin Center in Kansas City?
I haven't reached out to them.
Okay. It's been probably fifteen years since I knew what they were doing. So I'm not.
Coffin Foundation does, yeah. They do some entrepreneurship. They partner with Network Kansas on a couple of different projects.
I I don't know if they do anything specifically for centers though, but that's a.
It's a good resource.
Yeah, for sure. I've reached out to Emporia State. So Emporia State has the SBDC over there. So Sue, Sue. Talked to her. And then Wichita State, Troy down there, Wichita State, uh, is their center director. Had several conversations with them.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
This, this kind of activity is not something that just snap your fingers and and it happens. I mean, it's, it takes work and it's going to take a few years for us to really gain some traction. But once we start to getting some wins in there and start some businesses up, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see that just kind of snowball. So thanks for all your efforts. And, uh, you know, we're looking forward to great things.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Still.
Crystal, I did text her. Um, we will need to do the the two item, the action items with that. But maybe if we go into our regular session, she might come in later.
Okay. So are you ready to move on then, move our business? Okay, we're into section G, business items. Under the section G, the first item up is consideration of city insurance policy with EMC, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So I didn't have the renewal. I got it this afternoon about one, uh, one-thirty. So they came in and provided that with us. And so I've got the numbers here for you to look at. Uh, kind of broken down. Uh, I will say that it wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be, which is the good news. Uh, it's still bad, but it's not as bad as we thought it was going to be. Uh, so you wait here, what you got here, we got twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then in twenty-three, we made some changes. So we changed the deductible on a couple of things. And we added and changed a few of the coverages. So that was the, what ended up being the total premium for two thousand twenty-three. And then the twenty-four is the renewal here. Um, so there is some, some things over on this column that we still need to do, uh, to adjust that a little bit. So this won't be the final, final number, but it's pretty close. Um, one key thing that EMC has changed, because the insurance market is is pretty bad right now. Uh, they've had some real rough years. Um, they are moving our deductible. I have a choice. They're moving our wind and hail deductible for roofs from ten thousand, which is what we went to last year, to fifty thousand. Yeah. Which is not as bad as it could have been, because they have been moving a lot of, uh, school districts over to a percentage basis. So one to two percent. And you don't think that's a lot. But when you start getting into what a roof actually costs for, say, a school district, they're talking one million dollars over here for roofing. And it's bond issue. So one percent of that is a hundred thousand. You know, so you got to think about all this and yeah, it just, it gets a little bit crazy. Um, so we, we are getting a deductible change. Um, then we've got this, these are just kind of breaks down our, our property, how it is. Inland Marine is is basically your, uh, ma- most of your equipment type thing, this equipment stuff. General liability is is just our general liability. Um, business autos, all the automobiles, uh, we added some vehicles there. And we need to do some changes on a couple of those things too. Law enforcement has its own line. Um, and then we have, we added crime insurance, which covers, uh, theft of, theft of things from internal employees. Uh, the linebackers there, uh, we have cyber and data compromise, um, insurance, which is part of that. Uh, we do not have an umbrella policy through EMC. Uh, and we also, the, the airport is not insured through our EMC policy that has its own policy. Uh, we also found out today that the new drone that we bought is technically an aircraft. And so it has to be insured on its own policy as well. Yeah, that will not be insured through here. Um, so the total package ends up being a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three, uh, which is eight percent from what we uh, approved or actually ended up paying out last year. Uh, only two percent difference from what they originally quoted and what we, what we put in. So, uh, not as bad as I thought it was going to be. Um, still obviously not great, but anytime you have to pay more, it's always feels like you're, yeah, not moving forward. But uh, it's not too bad. And, uh, one of the things with EMC that we do get every year, it's not guaranteed, but we have gotten it for the last, however many dozens of years, uh, is a dividend check. So that's one of the things EMC kind of hangs their hat on. Um, come May or June, they'll refund us twenty thousand-ish dollars. Um, which is, you know, supposedly related to the, the success of the plan. And, you know, it's a dividend. So you're part of the, you know, this is part of your investment back on this. Uh, really what that means is that you paid too much premium and that you're giving you some back. Um, is what it is. So, you know, if you take the twenty out, it's about a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and fifty thousand almost. So um, it's not bad. The thing of it is, is we don't really have many options. Uh, EMC is pretty much the only provider in Kansas that's writing writing cities of any size. Uh, you could, could go your own insurance, you could self-insure, but we don't have the money to self-insure ourselves. Um, the other option is one we've looked at before was, uh, Midwest Public Risk Pool. That would be an option too. And that may be something we want to look at uh, in the future. But I think right now, the best course of action would be to to move forward with this EMC renewal for the year. At a hundred and sixty-eight, one fifty-three.
You sure we're, let's come up on here. Is that a different schedule? I know it's not through EMC.
Yeah, no, it's completely different. Yeah, we had them last year. We had them bid, um, work comp to compare it to K-MET. They're awash. Uh, we've got a pretty long history with K-MET. So that.
I mean, timing wise, when's the K-MET one come?
K-MET comes up in June, I think.
Okay.
I don't know. Good question. I believe it's June.
We just don't know what that's going to do yet.
No, we have no idea what that's going to be yet. I haven't received any information on the K-MET renewal. They're all off. Yeah, they're not on the same renewal schedule for whatever reason.
Um, do we know? Would it be feasible to try in the future to try to self-insure ourselves? Or is that completely out of the picture?
You need a pretty big chunk of change.
Yeah.
I don't know that we're of the size to make that vi- financially viable.
Well, the other option. Well, the other option that has been discussed and actually presented to pass count, previous councils was a pool. There is a pool group and are they, I think they're out of Missouri, right?
Yeah, they're, they're Midwest Public Risk, they have a Kansas and Missouri point, so those would be options too. I don't think it's viable to think that. We're just the size, we aren't probably in this position to do that.
Okay, so. I know it went up eight percent from last year, which is two percent more than what was. Is that? Fairly, because I know it probably goes up every single year. Is it, is that still in? Increase wise, is that higher than what it has been? So let's say if we went up eight percent, is it normally? Because I see from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-one to twenty-two, we went up at almost seventeen thousand. That was a pretty big increase. That's probably atypical. We've done pretty well holding the line, you know, of course with the changes we made last year, we were able to keep it low, but the moment the renewal was before. I would say that that is not out of line for what's happening right now and what we're seeing in other places.
Yeah, so market wise. I mean, it's obviously still high, but not what it could be, I guess.
No, this is, this is nothing compared to what school districts are saying. A lot of school districts are really having trouble. And some of our peers in, in other places with, with EMC and with other companies have had trouble. Specifically with utilities, for some reason they've been dropping power plants in a couple of places for some reason. I don't know, I don't know why the risk would have changed, but certainly a lot of capital cost involved with that, but. I don't know. But I, I think that's, this is probably fair and, and with what the market would think.
Any other questions? Assuming at this point you would like a motion to move forward with EMC. Again, for this coming year.
For the renewal, yeah. At, at a hundred and sixty-eight, one fifty-three.
And our agent, local agent is?
Eric Rector, Ag three sixty. Eric Rector and Joe Reed.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the. Continuing the city's insurance policy with EMC. Councilman Wilkins moves. Would you like to second?
Yeah.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll now move, we've got a series of ordinances all somewhat related to each other and I know we have some representatives of the. Of the folks that are going to do the construction here this evening. Mr. Styles, I'll let you.
Yeah.
Tee this up for us.
Okay. So you've got five ordinances in front of you, all related to alternative construction housing. So what we, the planning commission heard all these cases on the twenty-ninth of February. Separate cases, we've sent notifications out to everybody that was supposed to be notified. We published the notification on our city website in accordance with what we needed to do with that. So we had the public hearing, held the public hearings. Mr. Burke was here, he spoke on behalf of the development and the applicant. We did have one member of the public come in, but he really was more interested in, in just gathering information. Did provide some comments with regards to parking essentially. Was not negative about the, not about it at all, so we received no negative comments. And so we, we reviewed the full set of plans. What you have are. An identical plan for a single family home which you've already approved in January, the very first meeting in January. We approved one of these, it's the same floor plan for that one, the single family home, and that would be directly west of the one that we approved. So you've got. You look at the, the diagram there, you can kind of see where those at, those two yellow on your diagram are the two single family homes. One directly west of the home that's existing there at three, two oh two East Third is. One we've already approved and so the, the first ordinance would be to approve. A single family home and then the, the next four are related to a new plan, new floor plan, which is duplex floor model. I didn't attach that to this report because the files are ginormous, but if you wanted to look at that, I can pull those up off the city's website. Plan Commission linked to those. Really, I think most of the, the issue that was discussed there was with regard to parking. The, the plans do meet the requirements. You're supposed to have two off-site, off-street. Off-street spaces per living unit and the way it's set up, it would do that. Here's, here's kind of what that, that duplex floor plan looks like. That's a side view. Another one, so what you have are two containers here to put together and there's a ten-foot space between them, which you can't, can't see from that angle, but. So you've got them kind of stacked this way and then the parking is also stacked this way, so you've got two split stalls here, two stalls here. The problem being potentially if you've got people in the, the further south unit there. You know, how does that, how does somebody access the other side? That was probably the biggest point of, of conversation for this entire plan, so. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We went and toured. One that was under construction in Linsburg. Similar floor plan to one half of this duplex. Felt like that construction, it was as promised. Everything looked to be in accordance and, and Ben and I didn't have any issues. With how it was being built. The appearance looks pretty good. There's one, we toured one that was finished over an existing neighborhood. It's actually. Half a block south of Bethany College, right next to a park. It's actually a really good location. You got a good, good lot there. And they're both situated right in the middle of existing homes, more traditional existing homes. Didn't really feel out of place to me, didn't seem to be an issue at all as far as what that would look like within this. I guess this one doesn't have the gap in this. Got a couple here, yeah.
But those, there's a ten-foot gap. Actually, you know what? And that's the wrong one too. Sorry about that, but the roof line will.
Roof line.
Will be connected, okay.
So what you got are ordinance thirteen eighty-five is for the alternate construction housing overlay on one oh eight. East Third Street, which is that single family home. Then you've got thirteen eighty-six, thirteen eighty-seven, thirteen eighty-eight and thirteen eighty-nine, which are all the same. Instructions for two oh six, two oh four, two oh eight and three oh two East Third. The duplexes. The planning commission voted to move forward on all five of them. There wasn't a dissenting vote. There was a couple of questions, obviously. There's a few things to work out yet technically, but there was no deficiencies in any of the plans that we could find. Yeah, there's, there's really nothing. There was no negative comments about it. Originally, we had talked about. The planning commission had talked about wanting to see one completed. Before they would want to move forward with the other ones, but having looked at the ones in Linsburg, they felt like that. They would get what was promised and so that was. Became kind of a moot point for them too. Wood said there's a couple of things that will have to happen with these. There's some. If, if they want to move forward and do the duplexes first, there's gonna have to be an extension of utilities, which were not originally extended by Russell Groves when he put that in. And so there's some costs associated, especially with the electric. There's also a fire hydrant that needs to be placed to meet the fire code on one of the corners, which should also be something that would be borne typically by the developer. We've got sewer taps there and, and water connections, which would be part of our policy. We approved the policy to, to waive those connection fees for new housing units. Assuming you want to continue with that policy, those would be waived, but. So that's, that's really the kind of the gist of it. The planning commission's recommending approval of all of them. If you want to take them, you're gonna have to take each one independently. You can't do them all at once. That's what the recommendation is tonight. And Mr. Burke is here. I don't know if you want to jump in and.
I, I think you described it just fine. I mean, if there's any questions I can help answer.
What do you think you'd start construction?
Probably, I mean, we're just gonna talk about, about, you know, the utility buy-in and see what kind of lead time we have with some of the materials and stuff. But I mean, as soon as that's ready to go, we'll speak.
I know we're, you know, looking to see how these five do. If these five homes do well, is, would you be willing to expand and?
We expect to finish out that lot.
Okay, alright, yeah, because I saw that there were some more lots open and so basically just that whole row would ideally become.
That's right.
Okay.
So my question would be on how the individual units work with each other. Like, do you have the, the road, the parking facing each other? So the doors face each other?
So it's a little deceiving in that rendering. It's actually twenty-foot wide, that parking, so you get back by each other. Now, a comment was, you know, during the planning commission, by one of the residents said, hey. The, the guy in front, he's always gonna be messing up the guy in the back, right? And, and fair enough. They, they shouldn't, but they will, right? So we, we had just talked about. For the first unit, parking in front of that first unit, between the street. And, and the unit itself and have its, its designated parking there. Back unit is on the right-hand side.
Okay, okay. I was just curious if you'd, if you'd ever opened the front doors towards each other, so like if you put, build one on this side.
Oh, we can. I think we had a little setback issue by doing that, but I mean, that's an option too. I mean, we're not. You know, this, this is, we can flip them any which way.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to think, you know, keep the backyard, the backyard for both and.
Right. But then the next one wouldn't be. You keep going the same.
Right.
So you almost have to do, you know, two, two together, thinking.
The plan for these is they will be sold, correct?
These are not. No, these, these would all be held by us as rental properties.
Rental properties.
Other than the two single family homes for this to the.
To the west.
West, the ones closest to the.
Right, those two we plan on selling.
But the duplexes will be rental properties.
That's right.
How many duplexes versus single family homes, if you can extend and take that whole block?
The rest of them would be duplexes.
Okay.
How many more lots are right there?
There's fifteen total.
So you'd have another eleven? No.
No.
There's nine, I, I see.
Nine, another nine left, yeah.
So if you've got. Four duplexes, that's eight living units plus two singles, that's ten. And you add in, you know, the midnight housing proposed project, which would add another twenty-four. So we're talking about development. This town's not seen in. Well, yeah, a very, very long time. So, you know, when we think about our strategic plan and, you know, childcare, housing and workforce. You know, we're well on our way and gonna talk about childcare in a bit, but, but certainly the housing piece. I think is really gonna go a long ways to addressing the workforce piece. Got to have places for people to live. So. Any other questions or comments?
So each one of these has to be done?
Yep, we gotta do a motion.
Will be a roll call vote on each one. Okay, we ready to, to move to that process? So we'll start with ordinance thirteen eighty-five, the alternative housing construction. For housing at one oh eight East Third. Would somebody care to, to move for that adoption? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Bye, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins. Councilman McCarty. Councilman Bye. A second is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty-six. For alternative housing construction at two oh six East Third. Who would care to move for that? Councilman Wilkins. Sir, second. Councilman McCarty. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we will poll the council. Councilman Bye.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Uh, next is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty-seven, alternative housing construction at two oh four East Third. Would somebody care to move for that ordinance? Councilman Bye.
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Bye.
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. Next is. Turn, uh, ordinance thirteen eighty-eight, alternative housing construction at two oh eight East Third. And would somebody care to move on that?
The most.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman Bye, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will poll the council. Councilman Bye.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen eighty-eight is adopted. Final is ordinance thirteen eighty-nine. Alternative housing construction at three oh two East Third. Would somebody care to move on that? Councilman Wilkins. Sir, a second. Councilman McCarty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, poll the council. Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Bye.
Yes.
All of the alternative housing ordinance are hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. And we thank everybody for this. We're excited to get this project going and. Look forward to great things.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here and attending all the other, all the other meetings, you know, that have take, had to take place, but. You know, I think the process has proved itself out because, you know, when we initially started down this path, we had. We had some people that weren't necessarily on board and I think. You know, through your efforts and then your due diligence up in Linsburg, we've kind of cleared the, cleared the way, so.
Thank you.
I just want to say that we're staying in one, in it right now in the Linsburg one and we have two big boys and we are comfortable. Like, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a great first. Family home, like you were saying, for coming into work or whatever. It's like, it's really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
This is my wife's spokesperson.
The person that keeps the house, you know.
Yeah. Well, that's great.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't feel on top of each other anymore.
Okay, well, thank you very much again for being here and, and we're just moving upwards and onwards.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have one more item under our business section. Which is to consider setting a public hearing on April sixteen. At six thirty PM for adoption of the revised floodplain management ordinance. For the new FEMA floodplain maps. Mr. Styles.
So this has been a process that started in two thousand eighteen, so if you want to know how fast FEMA moves, two thousand eighteen. The COVID's in there too, so I guess I can't give you too much. So what you have here is a revised, a draft ordinance that's been approved by the chief engineer in the Division of Water Resources, which is one of the state statute requirements. For floodplain management. New floodplain maps are set to go final in July and you can go out and take a look at them. If you're interested in kind of what that is, impacts, oh, maybe two thousand homes in, in town. Probably has more impact on some of the commercial areas to the east side of town. They, they are revising them. They, of course, they've been in process since two thousand eighteen. These are all done with LiDAR, so they're flown. Loan and then use laser. Radar systems to measure the, the floodplains and topography and so they do this in kind of sections. And that's why it takes forever because they sort of do it across different plate, pieces in different places in the state. And it's a process. And then there's, of course, there's a lot of opportunities to probably comment and revision and doing all kinds of different things, so. If we want to participate in the floodplain management program, which puts us into the flood insurance program, federal flood insurance program for our citizens. We have to adopt this, adopt this ordinance and so. It is exactly the same as chapter sixteen, article six of what we already have, only it references the new maps. Part of this process is that we have to have a public hearing and so. Before we can officially adopt this, we have to provide twenty days of advance notice. I did check with them that the city's website would be an official publication. They were okay with that. FEMA was fine with that too. And so what we're asking for tonight is to set the public hearing date for April sixteenth. At which point we will review the ordinance one more time and then take action.
You said, you mentioned a couple dozen houses. You said you mentioned a couple dozen houses affected in the positive though?
Uh, all in the positive except for one.
One.
Um, which has a matter, a a letter of map revision that will be nullified. Um, and so we're gonna notify them that that's gonna be an issue for that person. Um, what it will do is eliminate, I think, half a dozen people from having to buy flood insurance, which is a good thing. It's about a thousand bucks a year. I can testify to that. And, you know, that'll that'll be a good thing, uh, by and large. And then, you know, we we went back and forth with them on a couple of bonding areas, which is a new thing that kind of got brought into this. Few changes, overall, pretty minimal.
I can see the the commercial side, it was less.
Yeah.
Less.
Reducing it.
Reducing the area that they had under the plan.
Once they had better, better topography, they can make that adjustment, so. It's a large, complicated formula, I'm claiming to know, but, goes into the FEMA black box and comes out the other side.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to set the public hearing, uh, on the FEMA flood plan, for April sixteen, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. Councilman By moves. Sir, second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Um, do you want to go back and just take?
Yeah, I'll take care of this business. Crystal's not able to join us apparently, so. Yes, so what we have, this is related to the C D B G, uh, grant for the childcare center. Uh, we did open bids on February twenty-ninth. We had one bid. Uh, it was about six hundred thousand dollars more than the in the architect's estimate. And so we had to go back and just kind of talk about what that looks like for as far as the childcare center and what the funding is and, and how that's structured. Um, at the end of the day, they came to the decision after consulting with C D B G to phase this project. Um, and so C D B G is recommending that we throw out the initial bids, uh, and then we go back out to bid, um, for April tenth for bid openings. And, uh, I think the pre-construction meeting would have been April second. Um, so the plan then would be, what we would need to do is reject the bids, um, go back out. Now, rejecting the bid has its own hazards, but the childcare center has kind of worked through that process and, this is what they're recommending and as the city, I think that's, it's probably, not in our best interest to supersede that, given that we're not really funding it. We're just sort of passing it through. So, uh, we are the receivers of the C D B G grant, but we do have to make the official motions and official actions on that. Um, so what they are recommending is we reject all, first to reject all the bids from the twenty-ninth, uh, February twenty-ninth bid opening. Uh, and then to set the new bid opening date for Wednesday, April tenth at two P M.
So the hope is with fading, we'll have more bids.
Yeah, well, I think that there there were, it was really interesting. There were at least six contractors who were actively pursuing this project, but they only, we only got one bid on the day. Um, the thought process is that we're going to phase the project a little differently, so that we can at least make into the into the, uh, project envelope of the money we have. And then C D B G will allow us to apply for a second six hundred thousand dollar grant for phase two. So they'll allow for that. So the thought process was, we'll get this first phase and get it started. And while you're in construction, you can apply for a second C D B G.
Okay.
That's the thought.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. So if we do phase it out and we get construction started on the first phase, and applying for funding for the second phase, is there a chance that we wouldn't get the funding for the second phase?
It's possible, yeah, it is possible. Um, so what would end up happening is that the first phase would be kind of self-contained. Uh, they wouldn't have their full capacity, is the way I understand it.
Okay.
So the second phase would be to, uh, bring in more of the upper level rooms that they initially had talked about. So, uh, what that would do is effectively be able, you'd be able to operate, but you would be certified for fewer kits. Um, until you, A, you got another C D B G, or B, you could raise more money through other sources. Now, there are active grant applications out there through other things, so, um, it's not all, you know, despair. Yeah.
Okay, um, do we know, how, how many, how much the occupancy would be affected? Or, well, I guess not, cuz the phasing hasn't been.
I don't know that. I don't have that information. Sorry, I can't use you. I'm, I know that that has been calculated.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to, uh, uh, do we need to take these separately?
Yeah.
Okay, first, accept a motion to reject all bids from the February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four bid opening. Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is to set the new bid opening for Wednesday, April ten, twenty twenty-four at two P M. Do I have a motion? Councilman By moves. Sir, second. Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move, drop back down into our discussion items. First discussion item is fair housing activity. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So, uh, part of community development block grant funds is that you have to perform a fair housing activity each year. This year, we're handing out these beautiful fair housing bookmarks. Uh, just need to make you aware of that. Costs pretty minimal. Uh, printed some out. We're gonna hand them out. I've got Easter eggs now for the chamber Easter egg hunt, so those are kind of going hand in hand. Um, really, we just, there's no action that you guys need to know. We just have to make it, make this known and reflected in the minutes that this is happening. So if you have any questions about fair housing activity or.
When I read that, I thought it was for the fair.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And I was confused and then I went and read through it and I was like, okay, that's what.
No. No, that's such, yeah, it's just an informational thing to get.
Fair housing, a fair housing.
That's right.
Put it into the minutes.
Okay. Um, I guess as part of that, can, after we're done handing them out, is there a way to just keep them like posted by the front window up there?
Yeah, we usually have a flyer that has the same information on it. I don't know if we've got it permanently posted somewhere. We can do that, though.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the.
Use myself for this next one. Okay.
We need to move on to the fleet replacement proposal, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to continue the conversation on this. We don't actually have a, I think the agreements are going back and forth between people, but, um, you know, we wanted to go back out and take a look at some more information gathering, was sort of what we had at the last meeting. So, um, from that, I went and talked, well, I've gotten some information about Ford and G M. They have very similar, uh, leasing, municipal fleet leasing programs. Um, you know, pretty much the same sort of acquisition piece. It would probably help with some of the sale piece too. Uh, fleet is handled kind of separately from where I understand it. Uh, there's fleet managers assigned to both. Um, so it's kind of a, it's a little bit different than having, thinking of that's the local dealer who's doing it. There's a fleet manager assigned to it too. Um, I was able to talk to Michael Hagan at Ford this morning, uh, a little bit about this. I mean, he he's, I think, interested in knowing more about it. This was sort of his thought process. He, he, you know, I I don't think he'd be sore if we, uh, went with something that wasn't through the dealership, is kind of, you know, those are his words. But he wouldn't want, he wanted to make sure that the city wasn't getting taken advantage of as far as the selling part of it and kind of how that markup price goes. So there's probably some more questions to be asked, uh, enterprise on that. So that's, that's where I did. I have not talked to Midway Motors. I haven't got to the right person at Midway to talk about that. Um, we had another conversation today, but it wasn't about that. So I'm gonna try to get in touch with them this week and and talk to them. Um, we, we went out and tried to find some alternatives too. There's another, there's another company called, uh, Municipal Fleet Services that seems to offer similar things, but they're, they seem to be more regional in the northwest. Um, they really didn't give me a whole lot of information back. And so, uh, I'm not sure that I wanna pursue them based on what I did get back. It looked a little bit, pokey, I guess, would be the right word. Um, I haven't talked to any of the other rental space, uh, rental car people, cuz I don't know that they, didn't appear that they have exactly that same type of thing. Um, but we're still kind of looking at that. Uh, I did have an opportunity to reach out and to get some feedback from other people who do use Enterprise. So many of the people we talked to, they do their own maintenance piece. They don't use the Enterprise maintenance solution. So they, they're really, they're really just talking about the acquisition part. Uh, the administrator in Ellsworth had success bidding maintenance, bidding out the maintenance portion of it, but they really haven't done too much with the acquisition side. Uh, Miami County didn't, looked at Enterprise, did not go with them. Uh, they felt like the purchasing prices were not good enough compared to the residual values that they were seeing. So the math for them didn't add up, um, but didn't feel like it would add up to them. Uh, talked to Salina pretty extensively. They've got a very positive. They, they got in at the right time. Uh, they got in pre-pandemic and then when the pandemic hit and used car prices were crazy, they were doing really good. Um, now that they're not as high, you're not, they're not seeing as much return on the equity side. So, uh, they still feel like they're ahead on it and they still wanna continue doing it. Um, Linsburg is in there too. They just have started that. They're only a couple of years in, so they don't have enough years to say from a long-term perspective. But it was something, uh, Unified Government K C K, they're very complimentary, um, management portions that are very complimentary on. We were supposed to, we're trying to set up a phone call with them too, but I ended up being out sick, so I didn't get to, didn't get to that, so. Um, spoke with Eric Rector, our insurance agent today. The big issue with that, I mean, it would change your, your, um, the insurance for those vehicles. Obviously, the value of them is significantly higher than the ones of the older vehicles. Um, so the difference there and the premium would be based on that value, um, so it would be some change there. That would be something that has to be taken into account. He felt like that'd be relatively small portion of the overall premium, so. That was kind of where it was at there. Um, I know Andrew sent Ken and the enterprise guys over what needs to happen as far as contractually, and we're still waiting to see back from enterprise if that's something that they can do. Imagine they can, but. Um, so right now, we're just sort of in the, in the fact-finding holding pattern conversation. But, um, based on that information, is it still something you want to continue with or do you wanna see more? How do you just want us to proceed?
Would it be untoward if we tried to put together a meeting with the, uh, two local dealerships and enterprise and get everybody in the same room and talk about it? Would that be, would there be an issue with that?
Not legally.
I think that would be a very good idea.
Yeah, you knew that.
I think that's the biggest issue for me is, I mean, we've got local businesses here and what, what we wanna make sure is that we're not, we're not in any way jeopardizing the, the, uh, you know, our relationships with these local dealerships who have really helped us ring the bell big time on our sales tax. And, you know, that, uh, those, those funds are coming, coming in on our, you know, on a high level on a regular basis. And, you know, even though we can't know where those come from, I think we can make some pretty, astute observations, you know, where, where the big ticket items are, you know, being sold in the community. So, you know, I think that's, I think that's fair. So that, that would be my only concern.
Definitely do that.
And, you know, if there's some other extra eyes on it as well, you know, it was interesting, even though, uh, even though we, we had, uh, we had a couple, uh, local businesses come in on the lawnmower thing, and even though it was a much smaller, smaller ticket item than this, you know, I think that was helpful for all of us. You know, that we had that conversation, that we were all in the room together and, we were able to kind of work through that, so. That's my two cents. Okay. Any other comments regarding this for now? Anybody feel otherwise about, about getting those, that, that, that specific group of people together? That would not necessarily be with the council. That would be with Matt, Matt and those people. Okay. All right, well, then I guess we're, uh, we're ready for your city administrator's report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I did meet with Darren actually today, this af- late this afternoon about, um, getting at, we had a lot more specific questions about Adam Street. There's an issue with getting the water line replacement permitted. Uh, right now, permits for water line issues are taking four to eight weeks to get permitted, uh, which is pretty long for, for a situation, especially when we're talking about bidding it out and getting started in the summertime. Uh, that doesn't really jive with how we're planning on doing this project. So, uh, we kind of worked out a strategy there. I think we can do that. I still haven't seen, uh, agreements yet for Lincoln or Wilson, uh, but he is starting to do some work on those. Couple of things we're gonna have to talk about, especially on, on Lincoln Street, um, the sidewalks. There are sidewalks on both sides of Lincoln Street, and it's just, it's a narrow street already. Um, we don't like putting sidewalks on back of curb, uh, because they move with the sidewalk. There's not enough room. They're not as safe. Um, so I think it would be good to set up a meeting with everybody or have an opportunity for everybody who lives on that street, uh, to come out and and kind of give us their opinion on what that would, what they would prefer there. Um, the other big issue there is the e- ingress, egress and ingress on that street are gonna be a mess when they go to do the construction. Uh, there are no alleyways on most of that street, and there is not a way to access at least the east half of the street, where the most of the houses are, uh, to get to those houses. Um, and so we would have to either phase construction or, um, set it up in such a way that it's gonna be disruptive for people. And so we gotta figure out the least disruptive way to handle that. Um, and I think having the community interaction there would be the best, uh, to sort of say, look, this is what we, what we all decided on, so. Um, and then we're also talking about maybe extending some storm sewer from, from the north, uh, from, the north side of D Street up Lincoln to fix the issue that's created by the drainage off of the, uh, fine arts center. That's a mess and that needs to be fixed. And, uh, when Lou and I talked to Darren, he thought it would be about fifty thousand dollars-ish, which is pretty, pretty minimal, tr- truly compared to the rest of that project, so. Um, A M P I building leases, we're gonna be taking a swing at those, hopefully at the next meeting. Those need to be revised. They are not correct and they need to, need to be just redone. Uh, we still got the issue with Gorgeous Dairy subleasing illegally to, uh, the spa people, so we gotta deal with that too. Uh, I wanna bring everybody's attention to Midnight Housing Meeting, which is gonna be Thursday.
Before we move on to that. I know that there was some conversation regarding A M P I about the, uh, trash, trash utility needing,
Yeah.
needing that space. Is that, is that something that we need to be considering? I mean, is that the space they should, should be occupying for that? Or is where we're at currently gonna be okay?
Well, yeah, I think the, the concern with the trash is getting the trucks undercover, cuz they're large pieces of equipment that are very expensive. Um, the most direct route to do that would be to use that space. It is set up for trucks that size. Um, there would be some question about whether or not the trash, you want the trash utility stuff in that neighborhood. Um, right now, it's out of sight, out of mind. But we need to maybe think about, it would be a consideration to think about.
But if you, if the, so help me understand something. If, if, if the tra- if the trucks would be parked inside the building, that's what I'm assuming is. What would be the issue with, with the neighborhood in terms of them operating out of that building?
Yeah, you always get the, there, there's a perception. I don't know that it's true.
Are we talking, thinking about odor?
Yeah, it could be odor. It could be some other things. I mean, it's a trash truck.
Right.
You know, they do wash them out, but they're still, still things. So that would be, that would be the concern.
Well, I guess my only comment was, I mean, you know, we're, we're hard pressed as it is for space and then for, for good space. And, you know, I know the, that we're renting that out, but, I mean, at the same time, what is that rental income versus the value of, to the city of using it for maybe what I would call a higher purpose, you know, from our perspective?
As, that is legitimate. That is legitimate, cuz it only gets four hundred dollars a month.
So I guess before we just drop new leases, let's, let's make sure that we don't really wanna use that space for something else.
Yeah, I think that's about, that's valid. I know the trash department would really like to use that space, so.
If I can, I think, cuz the trash trucks right now are just outside, right? Just, okay.
Yeah, that's a pretty big, pretty big capital investment to leave out to the elements. Uh, we really don't have a space down there to, for them. They can be pulled. Yeah, that's a pretty big, pretty big capital investment to leave out to the elements. Uh, we really don't have a space down there to, for them. They can be pulled inside to work on them. But the space down there isn't really set up for them to be that. Yeah. So. Yeah, I think that would, that's a valid point. I mean, if we, if we wanted to consider that, we don't, we need to redraw the leases for everybody else too, but. Yep, that's one we need to do. We have a thirty day out clause, if that's something we wanted to do. And I think it would be a good use for that building.
Well, it doesn't sound like those people, the gorgeous people are using it anyway.
Yeah, they're just letting, uh, the spa place store spa.
Well, and didn't we sell some property to the spa? So it's not like they don't have room to expand the business?
Yeah, and they lease, um, they lease another section of the A M P I building for storage already. So.
It would most likely stay, but it would be leasing that other side.
We wouldn't be taking away that. That would be a need to.
There's actually quite a few large vehicles out at the old sewer plant. I was down there today, as a matter of fact, and looked around. Uh, five or six large vehicles.
Use people a lot of stuff down there. Yeah, the back truck is down there. Uh, we have a lot of our generators down there and. Trailers, there's a lot of stuff.
I see, I kind of agree. I think we're hurting some space. I don't, I don't think it'd smell that bad being inside. I may be wrong, but I don't.
I mean, if you wanted to do that, what we, all we would need to do is notify them. We got to give them thirty days' notice that, you know, we're no longer interested. And then that would be the end of that.
Well, I, 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 I'm only suggesting that we consider that if we feel the value to the city. Justifies that, uh, that, that decision. And I mean, I don't know that any of us around the table are necessarily. In a position right now to, to make that call. It's more directing you to make, and, and your, and your team to make that call.
We do that, yeah.
Or, because are the trash trucks the higher ticket? Item that really we should be storing right? Or I guess what I'm getting at is people, you know, have the perception of, um. You know, the smell from the trash truck. You know, if the city could use that storage to store other things, but I guess what I'm getting at is, is, yeah, you know. Is it just the fact that the trash truck is just expense-wise, the thing that we want to protect the most versus other things?
Yeah, well.
Those are the biggest pieces of capital equipment.
In that case, I could see an argument for.
And those are, those are two that have to run, like every day. I mean, they run all the time. So. Taking that, I would say those are probably the most mission critical things that we have, because we could not operate as a trash utility. Without them, so.
Might be good enough to have them sit out during the winter too.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. No, I, I can tell you that the highest best use, uh, they would, the, the trash guys would definitely say that that would be a better situation. Now, they would have to move stuff and. Set up down there, but that, you know, that's just a matter of work, just a matter of time. So we can bring back that too.
I think, but, well, I don't know at this point if the council would, would, uh, would, would be okay with it. We could just give you direction. To make that call. I don't think it needs to come back before the council for our blessing. If you decide that that's the best purpose unless Andrew thinks that it's important that we do it otherwise. Counsel. We trust you guys to operate this place the way it needs to operate.
Fair enough. Appreciate that. Appreciate your trust. Okay, um, yeah, all right. Anything else on that? No, no, you're good. No. Um, Midnight Housing is having a meeting about our Orchard Ridge project. We mentioned housing earlier, um, this week on Thursday, uh, in this building. In the building, uh, six thirty. Uh, anyone can, anyone can come and give feedback on it, no big deal. Um, they're just, that's part of their process too. Uh, we've put it out into the newspaper, actually the Record ran an article on it. Put a news release out and we've got it up on Facebook. We're hoping to get people out, people interested in it. Um, we had a couple of people ask questions, mostly age-related. Or income-related questions, which we are not capable of answering. Um, hopefully they come in the meeting. That's what I can say.
Those are, uh, I would just say for, for any council members, if you can be there, be great, because that's a great opportunity. To listen to what people in the community have on their minds.
Uh, South Pond, following up on our last meeting, we had some conversations about how to address that South Pond. Uh, we need to get A V H in there. If we're gonna do anything to really evaluate the, the structure that's there now. It's in pretty bad shape. Um, golf course has in its long-range plan to put in a pond, um, which would replace the capacity essentially. Would be shifting the capacity onto the golf course and, you know, making it more attractive. Uh, and then that, that would have be, be the, have the same effect of slowing down the current, which is really what that pond is designed to do. So. Um, we're, we're looking at it. It would probably be something that we wouldn't get to until at least next year at the earliest. So. Just wanted to follow up because it was something that got brought up. Um, Building Bridges program, want to draw your attention to that. That's next week. Uh, six thirty at the middle school, high school. Um, got a flyer there, it kind of explains that. That's the workforce kind of. Roundtable discussions, um, that I talked with Tyler Weinbrenner about it yesterday. And they've got twenty people signed up to be kind of talking and presenting. So should be a pretty good event. Uh, city's gonna buy the pizza. That's kind of our portion of it. And kind of getting people there. So, uh, if you're able to come, great. We appreciate you being there. It should be an interesting time. Uh, it's part of our, our workforce. Um, strategic plan goal. So that's one of the things going on there. Uh, I got your K B P bill there. You can kind of see what that is. Uh, consumption's down three percent from last year, month to month. Um. Everything is still doing pretty well. We had a, a slightly higher energy cost adjustment this year, uh, but still the bill was, uh. Comparatively was a little less last year. So, uh, insurance savings report there. You can kind of take a look at what we did for this month. Still doing pretty well with the seven thousand savings this month compared to a fully funded Blue Cross Plan. Thirty-eight thousand total savings and a hundred and five in the bank for the reserve. Uh, then the financial reports are there. Um, would note that the audit may change some of these, because there are some journal entries that are happening to be made.
Adds up twelve thirty-one.
Yeah, so that'll have a ripple effect through your financials, but, um. And another thing to note, which I don't know if you can do any, it's more a frustration, I think, than anything, that the state, um, you know, they remit our sales tax every month. And they, this is, I think, the second or third time they've done it where they've, maybe more than that. Danielle's looking at me like more than that. Then it goes into the wrong month. They don't post it to us in their proper month, which screws up our accounting, um, for it. So. Uh, you know, you're gonna see that there's no sales tax revenue collected for like the, the local option sales tax. That's why it came in and got posted in March, because it didn't come in till March. So, uh, that I think is everything I have to say.
Hey, any questions? Okay, um, hearing none, um, we will now, uh, open it back up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment? I see nobody, well, I see somebody online, but I don't know that they're on to make a comment. And Jane's, Jane's dis- dispensed with her comments this evening, so we'll close that. And now move to council comments. Councilman By. Councilman McCarty. Councilman Wilkins.
Um, I'd like to say I'm very excited for all the new housing that, uh, town should be getting. I know we mentioned, I think it was earlier in the year. About trying to find ways to just provide more. Options for people and, I mean, you know, I, what, twenty-four some odd units?
Well, you've got twenty-four with Mennonite housing and these guys have got, uh, eight. Plus two singles, that's ten. So that's thirty-four.
Yeah, I mean.
And then we've sold a couple of lots down in, in Woba Land, so.
Yeah, I mean, bringing more people to town, keeping them local. I think it's just great.
I'm with you. Um, there is something that, uh, that I would like to comment on and, uh. We have been getting a number of alerts on, uh, on legislation that's come before the state. And I, I gotta tell you, I'm just continues to, to boggle my mind and disappoint me. What the legislator tries to do in terms of, uh, local control and, uh, the Senate. Uh, passed a bill out of committee where cities and counties, if they give out, um. If they give, um, tax incentives or they receive grants.
Yeah, that's your revenue bond.
That's your revenue bonds. They will be, uh, restricted to maintaining revenue neutral rate. They would. We would not be able to raise our, our, uh, our income above the revenue neutral rate, no matter what. And that's just one thing. I mean, you know, there's, uh, there's, uh, another one that, uh, uh, another Senate bill. Uh, three eleven that passed out without a hearing, which is a lot of. Dark eleventh hour nonsense coming out of these folks. And they seek to bypass the fair market value of certain commercial properties, which would shift more of the tax burden. On residential homeowners. And, you know, they call this the dark store theory. And so, you know, there's just a lot of stuff. So I would encourage everybody to pay attention to what's going on, to contact. Your legislator, your senator. I have been providing testimony as, as it has been requested. On these issues and, and I have submitted testimony on two or three different items that have come up like this of, of late and, uh. Express my displeasure and, and incredulity about, uh, what they're, what they're doing. So. You know, it's, it's, it's always irony if you want to know, you know, that, uh, how, if you listen to these guys that are up there. And gals, uh, you know, just, just, uh, belabor the fact that the federal government's getting in their, getting in their business. They're constantly getting in their business, but yet they just turn around and, uh, and, you know, attack local control. Left and right. It just continues to boggle my mind. So. I would encourage anybody on the council, any citizens of Hillsborough to, uh, to definitely, uh, reach out. And express, uh, your concern about some of this stuff. Because nothing's getting cheaper. I mean, you know, we just talked about insurance and, you know, we know things like that go up, but, I mean, how do you? Put the brakes on stuff like that? We got to have insurance, right? We got to have chemicals for our water treatment plant. We got to have materials to fix our streets with, right? We got to have fuel to run our vehicles, and our trash trucks have to run up and down the street. And all that stuff costs more every year. And so, you know, where do they expect us to get the money to do that? You know, we're also trying to grow our community, to grow our tax base and, and offer incentives to get people to come. Live, do business in Hillsborough, you know, and then they turn around and want to tie our hands behind our backs. It just blows my mind. So, anyway. Is there any other business with that said that needs to come before the council? Now that I got to get off my soapbox? All right, hearing none, that we will adjourn the meeting.